One thing that changed this year, the accounting rules changed and the city had to implement the lease standard, which they did very well, went very smoothly. The entire audit went well, honestly, about as good as we've experienced. But if you would, please stop with any questions, but I'll take you through the report kind of quickly. If you look on page eight, that's management's discussion and analysis, written primarily by sending. If you look over that, you get a good idea of the financial health of the city. Supposed to be a plain English version. Page twenty-four is where the government-wide financial statements begin. You'll see the statement, that position there for the entire government. And this is on a full basis of accounting, basically. You'll see the governmental activities there had three hundred and fifty-two million dollars in assets. Business-type activities had about a hundred and forty-seven million. Citywide's right at five hundred million in assets. The net position of the governmental activities is two hundred and six million. Business-type activities have a net position of ninety-eight million. Citywide's about three hundred and three million. The next page is the statement of activities on page twenty-six. That is the income statement, basically, for governments. And if you look at the far right column, you'll see a number in parentheses, fifty-one million dollars. That number basically means the city's got to raise that much money in taxes to pay all its bills. And if you look below, you'll see the revenues down there far exceeded the fifty-one million. The next set of financials are the fund-level financials, beginning on page twenty-seven. This is more of the budgetary basis of accounting, or kind of like the cash basis of accounting. You've got all the major funds there, the general fund, school tax fund, sportsplex fund, are the three major funds. All the other funds are grouped together in that fourth column. You can see the general fund had ninety, almost ninety-four million dollars in assets. Total government, governmental funds had a hundred and thirty-eight million in assets. General fund had a fund balance of about ninety-four million dollars. Citywide is a government, the total government funds, net position's about a hundred and thirty-eight million. The next, next page is, or page thirty, is your governmental funds income statements. These are just the fund-level income statements, and you can see each one covered its expenses there for the year. On page thirty-three, you've got your business-type activities broken out. You've got the electric utility, the sewer, telecommunications, solid waste. You've got the balance sheet there. One thing I will point out, the, the city did a really good job this year of taking advantage of the increase in rates. Before I could even call and recommend, they looked, they had already done it. I think it was June, that, this time last year, you're getting probably less than one percent, and now it's up over four percent. So they jumped on that really quickly. Page thirty-five's the, the income statement for the proprietary funds. And you can see all the proprietary funds were profitable, so no one is subsidizing anyone's electric, utility, or sewage, or solid waste. That's, that's what you're really kind of, what I look at there. The notes to the financial statements begin on page thirty. You may want to look at note eight, it's got all the debt the city owes there, detailed out. Page seventy-one is the budget. You can look at the budget compared to the actual results. And you'll see that revenue exceeded the budget for the general fund. You know, I think we were a little conservative in the budget coming out of COVID. And the expenses weren't, they were all in line with the budget, so. Are there any questions in this, in this report on the financial statements? The city was given an unmodified opinion, just good opinion. Any questions?
Question, comments?
I have one question. Are we able to communicate with you directly if we have questions as council members?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Um, you can, if you can, get you my information.
I think it's, I think I saw it somewhere.
You may have it.
Yeah. Alright, thanks.
Happy to talk to you. The single audit went well, the, all the federal money the city received, we did a compliance audit, there were no issues there. I'll bring your attention to two issues, and, and none of these I would consider significant issues, I'll just bring them to your attention. One of them, we ta, I've talked about this probably the last three or four years, but it's cybersecurity. And Stephen Dahl and his group, they do a really, really good job. But that is something that's very, very important, and I think the city needs to continue treating it as it has. One of our sister cities not too far from here was, was hit not too long ago, and they were down for months. So it is, you guys are a huge target, and take that threat very seriously. And you, you have, but I just always want to remind you, because it is serious. The, the other issue is kind of a minor issue, but we did notice in, when certificate of occupancies are issued, the information isn't going to the utility board to add sewer customers on a timely basis. There was a period of times during the year where that was kind of, there was a lag there, what happened very promptly. We brought, we, we learned that and brought it to, to the city's attention, and they are addressing that. We did also recommend, and when, when that happens, you may have someone added on to the sewers, using the sewer, just not getting a bill. So we did also recommend that they reconcile the customers that the utility board is billing with the customers we have on our file. Any questions at all, any other questions?
So was that, that sewer thing, was that not being handled at the utility board?
It was more of a city issue.
City issue?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, others? Thank you, John, we appreciate all you've done, appreciate the great job that you do. Let's see what else we have. A request to advertise, Matt?
Good evening, council members, mayor. Uh, tonight we have a request to advertise a rezoning on the northwest corner of Andrews Road and Anderson Road. Uh, the applicant is Brett Basquin with Forsyth Group for Keith Norman. Uh, the request would be to rezone two hundred and twenty-nine acres from R1 to planned unit development. Uh, this is a kind of mixed residential proposal. Includes a mix of single-family detached slots in, in various sizes, townhouses, uh, some cottage units, and then we'll have some open space spread throughout the development. Their original plan that went before the planning commission included both multifamily apartments and commercial uses right there on the corner. But after public hearing, the planning commission reviewing it, they ultimately made a recommendation for denial on that plan. That prompted the developer to come back in with his revised plan, which lowered the overall unit count by, I believe, about two hundred units. Uh, removed the commercial, removed the apartments, and is in the, the design that you have today. So the, the overall development includes nine hundred and twenty units. Uh, the planning commission at its February twenty-eighth meeting recommended, a positive recommendation to the city council.
Did they give a, um, an estimate of the time for the build-out?
Uh, the developers said this is a ten-to-fifteen-year project.
Ten to fifteen?
So they, they will have to run sewer to this. Uh, this will likely also include some improvements to roadway infrastructure and a few other things. And so it, it's likely that this will take, would take a while before, uh, any houses were to come out of the ground.
You mean just to get it ready to build on?
Just to get it ready to be defined, yes, sir.
Uh, questions, comments? Pleasure to counsel to send this for advertising.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Faly?
Good afternoon. We're asking the council to approve a contract for reclosures and SCL control. The bid opening date was February the twenty-seventh. The bid was mailed to fifteen vendors, one bid was, one bid was received. Recommend the contract be awarded to G and W Electric on their sole bid meeting specifications.
Questions?
We're asking the council to approve a purchase of a, a twenty-twenty-two Ford F-250 Super Duty truck. The bid opening date was March the first. The bid was mailed to fifteen vendors, one bid was received. Recommend the bid, the purchase be awarded to Vin-Laden Ford on their sole bid meeting specifications in amount of fifty-one thousand thirty-three dollars.
Question, I have a question, Lily. Um, are there fifteen vendors, are they all in the state of Alabama that have, uh, the, the state contract rights?
Um.
Not it mattered, I just wondered.
Not all fifteen vendors are in, are inside the state of Alabama.
Okay. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
We're asking the council to approve a contract for electrical substation site work. The bid opening date was February the twenty-seventh. The bid was mailed to twenty-one vendors, eight bids were received. Recommend the contract be awarded to Harbin Engineering and Contracting on their low bid meeting specifications in amount of ninety-seven thousand five hundred and seventy-five.
Questions? Okay.
We're asking the council to approve a contract for the construction of a right-turn lane and roadway improvements for Andrews Road. The bid opening date was February the twentieth. The bid was mailed to eighteen vendors, two bids were received. Recommend the contract be awarded to Robinson Paving on their low bid meeting specifications in amount of seven hundred thirty-nine thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy-five cents.
Questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, we will take a short five-minute break, and we'll start promptly at six. And we'll need some help going through the process that we went through at noon this afternoon to get Mr. Asia to be a part of the, the meeting. So Russell will lead us in that. Okay?
You know what, guys, with so many different divisions and agents, I, I can't keep up with about one of them.
Y'all be standing, I should be standing right here, face the flag.
Testing.
Have you tested stuff right now?
No, he had a little situation.
No, I was at the trip plan the other day when she was out there, and my feet were so muddy when I got home. I tracked all through the house. That's right, that's right.
Dad, do you know which one Russell has decided to sit in, this one or that one?
Russell sits right there for you.
I didn't know if he had moved tonight.
May I have your attention, please? If I could have your attention, I'd like to call the Opelika City Council meeting of Mark the Seventh to order. Call roll, please, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Allen. Ms. Norton.
President.
Mr. Wright.
In my seat.
Mr. Smith, Mr. Schitt. Um, Pres, Mr. President, per the City Code Ordinance Section two-dash-one-sixty-one dot one, individual council members will be allowed to participate in a city council meeting by electronic means if he or she is unable to be physically present due to an illness, meaning sickness, disease, or other physical condition that causes our council member to face significant difficulties attending a meeting in person. Mr. Asia has petitioned the council to attend this meeting by electronic means due to recently being exposed to COVID-19, and submitted the letter before you. Mr. President, any member of the council that is physically present shall make a motion to approve or disapprove the absent council member's request. Upon adoption of a motion to approve, the council member's full participation in the meeting by electronic means shall be allowed to record in the minutes of the meeting. If the motion is to disapprove the specific aspect of the policy that will be violated by the council member's proposed participation by electronic means must be stated and recorded in the minutes of the meeting. Either the motion to, either motion will require a second, would be also subject to debate, and would require a majority vote of the physically present members.
Could need someone's credit card. Is there a motion to allow Mr. Asia to join us by, uh, electronic service?
So move.
We have a motion as a second, any discussion? Call roll, please.
Mr. Rep.
Aye.
Ms. Norton.
Aye.
Mr. Rep.
Aye. Aye.
All loaded up.
Tell me you can hear us. Okay, good, there, thank you. Uh, we're honored to have the Reverend Dr. Tom Tippett with us from Christian Care Ministries. I'm gonna ask him to make his way to the podium over to the left, and he'll be followed by Aiden Tybalt and Casey Daddel, Daddel, from the Opelika Middle School, that will lead us in our pledge of allegiance, so if you all would stand.
Father God, we thank you so much for the privilege to be in your presence continually through your son. We're very grateful for this community, we're grateful for the leadership that you have in our government. We're so thankful for the privilege that we have to speak to you in this setting. We're so thankful for the respect that this community has for you and for your law. And we thank you for those that are serving us in so many ways. We particularly, Father, thank you for our law enforcement officers, those in uniform, those who work to keep our streets safe for us. Please protect them, keep them safe, make them wise in what is good, make them aware of those who would want to hurt themselves and hurt others. May they, may they wield the sword according to your word with the authority that you've given them to bring about this kind of tranquil life, a peaceful life that we have in our community. We thank you for them. We're also very thankful for those that are, uh, teaching our children, those administrators, those, those who are in the classroom, for those that keep the buildings, um, in order and clean for our children. Very grateful for the decision that our community has recently made, and the confidence that we have in the leadership of our schools, and the, and, and the board, and everybody that, that's involved. We're also thankful for our chamber and for the work that they're doing to improve the life of all of us in this community. And we're so grateful for their dedication, and for the, the great ambition that they have to enlarge their influence and their effectiveness in, in helping us all. So we're really a blessed community, we thank you for the history here, and for everybody who's contributed to that, those that gone before us, and those who are with us now, and those who will come after us to maintain the kind of community that's honored to you, respectful of you, and safe and prosperous, in your son's name, amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Quite a pledge, please, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, God. You all have, uh, previously received a copy of the minutes of the, of the previous meeting, as soon as I find mine. Oh, back there. Uh, you all have previously received a copy of the minutes of the February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, is there any additions, deletions, or corrections? I haven't, and they don't stand as presented. Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. President, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen, we've got, uh, the folks we're gonna recognize tonight. I'd like for, uh, Sam Bailey, the priest, Pamela, Bobby, Laura Lee to all join me down here. And, uh, members of the park board, Ruston Melnick, Jasper Snipes, Tony Hoyet, Shirley Lassby, Jim Aiken. If y'all are here, please come and join us. Hey, Jeff. How you doing, man? Glad to see you. Hey, everybody. Alright, Bobby, Sam. Sam, come on over here, you the first one I'll talk about. This is Pamela Driver. Uh, this year, the ARPA, Justified Merit and Recreation Award was given to Pamela Driver, Covington Recreation Center Supervisor. This award is given each year to a recreation professional who has shown outstanding leadership in recreation, leisure, or special event programming. Sam has been working with Parks and Rec for ten years, and during that time, she has raised the bar of excellence by including love and enthusiasm for her job and the people she serves. Let's give it up for Pamela Driver. Alright, see, uh, alright, Bobby, where'd you go? Come on over here.
Yeah, we'll swat over.
The Alabama Recreation and Parks Association awarded Champions Academy with the Innovative Program of the Year Award. This award honors programs that demonstrate exceptional innovation in design, presentation, and implementation in the parks and recreation field. Covington Area Manager Bobby Nix created Champions Academy to help equip seventh, eighth, and ninth grade young men with the character and skills necessary to thrive and contribute to our community. Bobby Nix.
Come on, double A.
Alright, Lauren Lee. Opelika Parks and Recreation Public Relations Coordinator Laura Lee Chesser was named president of the ARPA. Laura Lee will lead the five-hundred-and-twenty-member organization during the new woman's term. Laura Lee has been working for the city of Opelika for ten years, and has served on the ARPA Board of Directors and public团支, including secretary, district staff chairperson, and the marketing committee chairperson, the president, Laura Lee Chesser. Now, Sam, this, I guess this is for you and the priest.
It's for all the constable, everybody. It's for everybody.
The Alabama Recreation and Parks Association recognized Opelika Parks and Recreation as the Agency of the Year for two thousand twenty-two. This award recognizes exemplary agencies in the state that have made contributions to parks and recreation programs on the local, state, regional, and national level. Although Opelika is highly regarded by parks and recreation departments across the state, this is the first tab that Opelika Parks and Rec has won this award since the department's conception in nineteen forty-six. Opelika Parks and Recreation offers more than one hundred programs, special events, leagues, and classes annually. Their motto is "Something for Everybody," and they strive to provide recreational opportunities for every citizen of Opelika. So congratulations, Sam, the priest. We gotta give, uh.
Get in front of, there you go. I'll be able to see on you.
Here, Bobby, why don't you get back there, Sam?
Alright. There you go.
Can I get you a little sweat, please? There we go. Alright, now, Sam, and bring it, Sam, Russ, what comment do you, I wanna give you a recipe.
I'd, I'd say about Agents of the Year, it is for all of us. And it starts at the very bottom and goes straight up, and, and our whole staff was part of this. It's not a select few, everybody we've got does, is part of.
That's the same thing I was gonna say, that we're so fortunate to have the employees that we have. They tend to go above and beyond what's asked of them. If somebody needs help, you get three or four to pitch in. If they have to stay over three hours, if they're paid on salary, that's just, they don't mind. And when this war should have been ours for about five years in a row. I was so proud of our staff. I mean, they, uh, and it's all to do, and it inspires them.
Thank y'all, we appreciate it.
Thank you, y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Rep.
Yes, sir, thank you. Congratulations, Sam, and to you all.
Thank you.
That's quite impressive. And citizen communication, Mr. Jones?
Okay, now with any time, if you'd like to speak to the mayor and council, please come to the podium over here to the left. Please, if you have not signed a, signed a sheet with your name, address, cell phone, email, getting in contact with you. Please keep it five minutes or less, if you have one moment here, you're not, uh, you're here for the moment here, please wait to that time. Section, have your address when you speak, please.
Good afternoon, my name is Chelsea Mills, and live at seven oh eight Dogwood Avenue in Opelika, Alabama. I am a fifty-plus-year resident on Dogwood Avenue, as well as a licensed home daycare. I am a fifty-plus year resident on Dogwood Avenue as well as a licensed home daycare owner and operator. I would like to express my concerns regarding the stockpile of rubbish and clutter that is being collected next door to my home at seven ten Dogwood Avenue. I have been operating my home daycare business since two thousand sixteen, and I have small age children that are outside to play and have fun on a daily basis. The pile up next door has become a nuisance. Various car parts, old non-working vehicles that are not being utilized for ten years or more. Tires and all miscellaneous objects are not only a sight for the sore eyes, but also hazardous for the environment. I am extreme, I am extremely passionate about my home and I value it. My business is to ensure the parents of my daycare children that they are being provided with a clean, safe place to learn and grow. The buildup next door is a huge inconvenience and is becoming a hindrance to the conducting of my business. The dervis is an attraction of various insects, microorganisms, that have begun to affect my yard. I have recently encountered snake skin as well as killing a live snake on a day that the child was not there, that the children were not there. I have never had a problem with this in over the fifty years that I've been living at my residence. I take the necessary precautions at my home, such as proper fencing, yard maintenance, to include grass cutting, de-weeding, and pest control in order to follow the minimum standards requirement set in place by DHR. I have talked with the neighbors. However, the issue is only getting worse and there is no action being taken by them to remove the waste. Twenty-plus years ago, they owned the house on the lot of seven ten Dogwood that burned down and they never rebuilt it. The neighbors feel as if camouflaging the area with a fence since they owned the lot at seven ten is acceptable. They currently reside at seven oh nine Dogwood while using seven ten as a scrapyard and a stockpile. I take pride in my home and I encourage and prefer others to do the same for the neighborhood's sake. To address and resolve this problem, I propose that my neighbors be required to remove all the rubbish, clean the area, and maintain the grass in order to produce a safe overall area. This resolution is es- especially imperative if the stockpile of non-working vehicles are right next to my play area in the backyard. I appreciate your immediate attention to this matter so that I can continue to provide a safe and enjoyable surrounding for me and my children with kind resorts, uh, resort regards. And I have prepared a tri board here. I didn't know that you could have placed them on the big screen. I have prepared a tri board of my area as well as what their area looks like. My daycare area very clean and their yard next to my playground is very terrible. And it's sad. And I have talked to them several occasions many times before. Not only is this a problem I had in the past with my neighbors, they had five dogs running around the neighborhood, which I had to finally get the animal control to remove the dogs because there is a leash law. And they finally did never respond to the animal control, had to come out and pick the dogs up. My yard versus their yard next door to my playground.
Have you, have you talked to the city administrator and others about this yet?
I have, um, talked with the environmental, um, service one time. Mary Fuller and I talked about that. And they came out and they said, again, since they was camouflaging it with a fence, which I really don't think is really camouflaging it, that it's okay. And right by my playground in the backyard where I have to take the kids, it's, it's just terrible. And I am doing all that I can to keep my area clean and safe for the kids. And the front of their yard is, is terrible as well.
Okay. If you'll, if you'll get with Mr. Marley and, um...
I thank you all so very much.
Thank you for letting us know. It is a private property issue, but there may be something that can be done about it. Others? Okay, we'll move on. Uh, general business, Mr. Jones.
Mr. President, first item of our general business is a request for a temporary street closure from Opelika Chamber for Biden on for March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having none, call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Norris. Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Ralph.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye. Second item is a request for the twelfth annual Golden Blue Office of Event at Courthouse Square on April first, two thousand twenty-three.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? Having none, call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Norris.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Mr. Ralph.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye. Third item is a request for Opelika Main Street for on tap craft beer event on May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having none, call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Norris.
Aye.
Mr. Agent. Mr. Ralph.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye. Fourth item is a request for the kids' duathlon at Sportsplex on August fifth, two thousand twenty-three.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? Having none, call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Norris.
Aye.
Mr. Agent. Mr. Ralph.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye. Fifth and final item is a public hearing for a project development agreement with PFI LTD.
I declare this public hearing open. Anyone who wants to speak, like to speak for or against this issue, come to the podium to my left and do so at this time. Having no one, I declare public hearing closed. Bits, Mr. Family.
We're asking the council to approve a contract for reclosures and SEL control. The bid opening date was February the twenty-seventh. The bid was mailed to fifteen vendors. One bid was received. Recommend the contract be awarded to GNW Electric on their sole bid meeting specifications.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having none, call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Norris.
Aye.
Mr. Agent. Mr. Ralph.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
We're asking the council to approve a, to approve a purchase of a twenty twenty, of a twenty twenty-two Ford F two fifty super, super duty truck. The bid opening date was March the first. The bid was mailed to fifteen vendors. One bid was received. Recommend a warrant of purchase to Lynn Layton Ford on their sole bid meeting specifications in amount of fifty-one thousand thirty-three dollars.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having none, call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Norris.
Aye.
Mr. Agent. Mr. Ralph.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
We're asking the council to approve a contract for electrical substation site work. The bid opening date was February the twenty-seventh. The bid was mailed to twenty-one vendors. Eight bids were received. Recommend the contract be awarded to Harmon Engineering on their low bid meeting specifications in amount of ninety-seven thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having none, call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Norris.
Aye.
Mr. Agent. Mr. Ralph.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
We're asking the council to approve a contract for the construction of a right turn lane and roadway improvements for Andrews Road. The bid opening date was February the twentieth. The bid was mailed to eighteen vendors. Two bids were received. Recommend the contract be awarded to Robson Paving on their low bid meeting specifications in amount of seven hundred thirty-nine thousand, one hundred fifteen thousand, fifteen thousand dollars and seventy-five cents.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having none, call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Norris.
Aye.
Mr. Agent. Mr. Ralph.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, resolutions, Mr. Gunn.
Mr. President, the first resolution approves a travel expense report submitted by Jessica Samuel of the Opelika Power Services.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having none, call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Norris.
Aye.
Mr. Agent. Mr. Ralph.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
The second resolution authorizes the mayor to dispose of eleven items of personal property owned by the city of Opelika as surplus property.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having none, call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Norris.
Aye.
Mr. Agent. Mr. Ralph.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
The third resolution authorizes the police department to purchase eight SWAT bulletproof vests from Guff State's distributors at a cost of thirty thousand six hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having none, call roll, please.
Mr. Ralph.
Aye.
Mr. Norris.
Aye.
Agent. Mr. Ralph.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
The fourth resolution authorizes the information technology department to purchase a renewal contract for rubric software support and maintenance uh, from CDW Government at a cost of sixty-one thousand two hundred, four hundred seventy-two dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having none, call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Norris.
Aye.
Mr. Agent. Mr. Ralph.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Mr. President, the, uh, Opelika Sportsplex occupies a site that consists of approximately seventy-six acres of land. This land was donated to the city generously by Yetta and Mary Sanford. You have before you a resolution to accept a donation of additional real estate from Two Eighty Land Company, LLC. The principal owner of this company is Erling McWhorter. Mr. McWhorter has generously offered to donate to the city an additional twenty-seven point forty-six acres, which would bring the site up to approximately a hundred and three acres.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having none, call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Norris.
Aye.
Mr. Agent. Mr. Ralph.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
The sixth resolution approves an addendum to the master services agreement between the city of Opelika and Albrecht's LLC.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? Having none, call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Norris.
Aye.
Mr. Agent. Mr. Ralph.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
The seventh, uh, resolution approves a, uh, policy for off-duty police officers to work off-duty jobs at various business premises.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by two.
Yeah, I heard it. Um, is there a discussion? Having none, call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Norris.
Aye.
Mr. Agent. Mr. Ralph.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Regarding the eighth resolution, uh, STI Opelika LLC is proposing, uh, a major addition to its building located at four twenty Williamson Avenue. The cost of the project is estimated to be four million dollars. You have before you a resolution approving certain tax abatements and exemptions for STI LLC for its expansion at four twenty Williamson Avenue.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second. Is there a discussion? Having none, call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Norris.
Aye.
Mr. Agent. Mr. Ralph.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Mr. President, uh, regarding the, uh, the, the ninth resolution pertains to a public hearing that was held this evening. It authorizes a project agreement between the city of Opelika and PFLLTD and/or DC LLC. With respect to this project, uh, PTL LTD actually owns the real estate and it has entered into a ground lease with ORDC LLC. Uh, this property is being developed as two modern warehouses consisting of about four hundred and forty thousand square feet of space. Uh, the project, uh, will require a capital investment of over, of eighteen million eight hundred fifty-three thousand nine hundred dollars. And when fully placed in service will create approximately one hundred and twenty, uh, new jobs for the city of Opelika. Uh, the city is offering to pay an incentive payment of one hundred fifty thousand dollars to, uh, relocate, uh, the underground drainage at the site.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having none, call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Norris.
Aye.
Mr. Agent. Mr. Ralph.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Resolution number ten approves a special use permit in favor of Verizon Wireless to modify its equipment at its one hundred eighty-five foot tall self-support tower located at nine hundred Reader Avenue.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second? Is there a discussion? Having none, call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Norris.
Aye.
Mr. Agent. Mr. Ralph.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Resolution number eleven authorizes a special appropriation in the amount of five thousand dollars to the American Cancer Society to help support its annual Relay for Life event.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having none, call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Norris.
Aye.
Mr. Agent.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Finally, resolution number twelve approves a special appropriation in the amount of three thousand five hundred dollars to the Domestic Violence Intervention Center.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Having none, call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Norris.
Aye.
Mr. Agent. Mr. Ralph.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
Ordinance, Mr. Gunn.
Mr. President, the first ordinance is an ordinance to amend the zoning map of the city of Opelika by rezoning the old Lester Mill site from M one to planned unit development. This, uh, item is on the table and, uh, the developer has requested that it remain on the table.
Okay.
Gratitude.
Thank you.
Uh, the second ordinance is before the council for first reading. Uh, the purpose of this ordinance is to create two new categories under the city's business license schedule. Uh, one will be retail, all health, and personal care retailers. Uh, the purpose for this is to be able to license, uh, medical marijuana dispensaries. Uh, the second is a general services amusement theme, uh, category. And the purpose of this is to, is to, uh, grant a license for the new, uh, recreational amenities on Parkway.
Ask for a member of the council to introduce this ordinance.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Ms. Norris. Um, appointments, um, first one is a, a reappointment of Brent Potteig to the Property Maintenance Board of Appeals for a term that would expire March the sixteenth of two thousand and twenty-six. Is there a motion to reappoint Mr. Potteig?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Uh, call roll, please.
Mr. Ralph.
Aye.
Mr. Norris.
Aye.
Mr. Agent. Mr. Ralph.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
The second is a, uh, a reappointment of Rusty Melnick to the Board of Parks and Recreation. Rusty has been a, a longtime member, uh, serves as the chairman and has done a wonderful job. And we thank you for your previous service.
thank you for your previous service, and this, uh, reappointment would, uh, carry him through March the fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-eight. Is there a motion to reappoint Mr. Melnick?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Norris.
Aye.
Mr. Agent. Mr. Ralph.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
All voted aye.
The next one is a, uh, appointment of Carlton E. Hunley the fourth to the Medical Clinic Board uh, for a term that would end March the second of two thousand and twenty-nine. Ironically, the person that is rolling off of this board is Carlton E. Hunley the third. Mr. Hunley is the third, is moving to be closer to his grandchildren. Uh, is there a motion to appoint Mr. Hunley the fourth?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Call roll, please.
Mr. Allen.
Aye.